We're gonna start the Blackstone Millville Regional School District Committee meeting for January 22nd, 2015. Please rise to pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Introduction to members. I'm Steve T. from Millville.
Steve T.? I'm Jane R. from Millville.
I'm Jared from Blackstone.
Winnie Greenstein, Blackstone.
Erin Vinoco, Millville.
Dave Thompson, Assistant Superintendent.
Alan Himmelberger, Superintendent.
Bill Chaplin, Blackstone. So, we're gonna jump around our agenda here a little bit. We're gonna hold off on the public forum and the report of the student representatives to get right to the most important part of the meeting, where we have Mrs. Warren's 4th grade class, that we are very, very, very excited for you guys to be here and to report to us on all the great things you're doing. So, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Don't be nervous, start with a joke, we can do a knock-knock joke, whatever you wanna do.
You might not hear it, but they'll hear it in there.
Oh, okay. Alright, so everybody that has a sheet of paper, come on up.
Part of the 4th grade curriculum is to study animals and how they meet their basic needs and their environment. These basic needs are the right: climate, oxygen, water, shelter, and food. If an animal cannot meet these basic needs in its environment, the animal must adapt. If the animal cannot adapt, it might slowly decline in population. This might lead to the animal being placed on an endangered species list. We will share some of the topics and what we learned about these animals.
Process: We use a variety of resources to help us understand our animal. We use their computer lab on a weekly basis.
We also use the iPad cart, which contains 20 iPads. This allowed us to research important facts on animals.
Thank you for allowing us to share our learning with you.
Great job.
My name is Lucy Watson and I did my project on the axolotl. Axolotl, common name Mexican walking fish or water monster. Scientific name: axolotl, Ambystoma mexicario. Classification: amphibian. Behavior: The most interesting behavior that an axolotl has is the ability to regenerate body parts. If a predator is attacking them, they can release that body part and not long after it will grow back. They are boring to watch because they might not move for several hours at a time, and when they do move, it is very slowly. Axolotls neither migrate nor hibernate. Oxygen: Axolotls have two ways of breathing. They breathe through gills and their skin. However, they also have lungs. This allows them to stay underwater like fish do, but it also allows them to breathe for a limited time above water. Unlike fish do, axolotls can breathe air for several minutes without dying, but it is not recommended because their skin needs to stay moist to help them breathe. Interesting facts: Occasionally, axolotls morph into terrestrial, which means land salamanders, but generally do not live for more than a few years. Axolotls are believed to be around for more than 140 million years and are highly evolutionary.
You're fine. As loud as you need to be. The microphones are for the people at home.
But I would appreciate knowing their names, so when they come up.
It was Lucy?
I know Lucy.
No, you're fine.
I'm Claudia Bland and I did the Australian dingo. "Australia's prowling predator is either a vicious wild dog that attacks children and devours farm animals, or a loving and devoted pet as cuddly as a kitten." It just depends on whom you ask, by Madeline Hinshi. Australian dingo, common name: dingo, scientific name: Canis lupus dingo. Classification: mammal, part of the canine family or wild dog. Australian dingo behavior: The dingo can be a social animal living in a pack or alone. Living in a pack is a learned behavior. They have also learned to play possum when they feel threatened in the wild. In the wild, they also learn to howl with each other to communicate. The way that it will hunt for its food is an instinct. It can adjust its hunting style to the size and availability of its prey. Dingo can also climb a tree by jumping into the branches. The dingo is nocturnal in warmer regions, but they are less so in cooler areas. The dingo will usually stay in one territory to hunt until the food supply is gone. They will mark their territory to set boundaries. Because the dingo can adjust to most climates, it doesn't need to hibernate. The dingo doesn't migrate with the change of seasons, but they will when there is a food shortage. Why the dingo is endangered: The Australian dingo is becoming endangered. If we do not step up soon, they will become extinct. The Australian government allows farmers to kill the dingo with poison or traps. The biggest reason they are becoming endangered is because they are breeding with domesticated dogs. It is becoming hard to tell the dingo from a crossbreed. It is also a problem because people are hunting them. People will hunt the dingo for its scalp and its skin. Some people even hunt them to breed them and sell. The sad part is, the Australian government has no laws in place to protect the dingo. They play an important role in the Australian ecosystem. There are also dingo conservation parks in Australia. That is the only place the government will protect them. Australian dingo, interesting facts: Australian dingos do not bark, they howl. There are three types of howls: moans, howls, and snuffs. Dingoes' paws are like wrists, they can use to turn doorknobs. There have only been three attacks on humans by the dingo in over 200 years, and about 14,000 reports of attacks from domesticated dogs on humans in one year.
My name is Sophia Mazikelli and I did the tree kangaroo.
Did you draw that?
Yes. Name of animal: Golden mantle tree kangaroo. Common name: Tree kangaroo. Scientific name: Dendroglus. Classification: Mammal. Diet: Tree kangaroos mostly eat leaves, flowers, fruits, and nuts. They also eat bird grains, eggs, and she-bark. Some trees that they eat are elder, ficus, elm, willow, and maple. They are also known to eat bamboo. Why endangered: Tree kangaroos are endangered because of hunting and loss of their habitat. Hunters will hunt them for fur and for their food. Their habitats are being destroyed. This leaves the tree kangaroos prey to wild dogs, snakes, and crocodiles. Interesting facts: The tree kangaroo's length of its tail is the same length of its body. Tree kangaroos have very short teeth that are sharp so that they can tear off leaves from trees.
My name is Ray Hagerty and I did the koala bear. Name: Koala bear. Common name: Koala. Scientific name: Fascularto sinensis, mammal. Behavior: Koals are lazy animals. They are slow-moving and have low energy. Koals are nocturnal and sleep up to 16 hours a day. Koals are also completely harmless and they love to sit on human laps. They spend no other time sleeping and caring for joeys. Why endangered: One of the reasons koals are endangered is because of diseases. They suffer from eye infections and bone diseases. Another reason is that humans are destroying their habitat so they can't find a place to live and then getting too stressed. Interesting facts: Koals are marsupials. When koalas are born, they're not fully developed.
I'm Madison Gauda and I did the snow leopard. Scientific name: Panthera unsea. Common name: Snow leopard. Classification: Mammal. Habitat: Snow leopards are found at high altitude in the steep and rocky mountains of Central Asia. China contains 60% of the snow leopard's habitat. The climate there is cold and dry. Only grasses and small shrubs can grow there. Snow leopards prefer rough land with cliffs, rocky ledges, and ravines. These landforms provide good cover and clear views to help the snow leopard sneak and find and sneak up on their prey. Snow leopards are nomadic, which means they are constantly moving around. They travel along ridge lines and cliff bases and then choose bedding sites with good views of the surrounding land. Snow leopards can travel up to 27 miles of open land in one night. Endangered: Snow leopards are endangered mainly because of human activities. One of the reasons is poaching. Hunters will use snow leopard fur for garments. Their bones are used in traditional Asian medicine and are sometimes captured for private animal collections. The second reason is retribution killings. Snow leopards sometimes eat farm animals when their usual prey is not around. Then the herder kills the snow leopards to protect his flock. The next reason is loss of habitat and prey. People are invading the snow leopard's land and are also hunting the prey of snow leopards. Another reason is mining. Mining uses dangerous chemicals and explosives. This causes snow leopards to relocate because of ecological damage. The last reason is that enforcing laws to protect snow leopards are expensive and it's very hard to catch poachers. Interesting facts: There are only two known attacks on humans ever recorded. The first was the rabid snow leopard that injured two men. The second attack was a starving snow leopard that attacked a man, but the snow leopard was captured instead. Snow leopards are incredible jumpers. They can jump as far as 50 feet. There are only around 6,000 snow leopards left in the wild and around 600 living in zoos.
Hi, my name is Declan Shave and I did the Tasmanian devil. Classification: Tasmanian devil, sarcophilius, harassi, mammal. Habitat: Tasmanian devils live off the southern coast of eastern Australia on the island of Tasmania. Habitat include forests, meadows, seashores, and around human settlements, but is usually found in a brushy or wooded area. Why endangered: The Tasmanian devil is endangered for many reasons. The main reason is because savage fights that often break out and lead to death. Other reasons are diseases spread by one Tasmanian devil biting another devil. In addition, their food supply had been running out. In the old days, overhunting was a big reason the Tasmanian devils going extinct. Fun facts: When devil has a baby in its pouch and the mother goes swimming, closes up the pouch so the babies don't drown. The Tasmanian devil partially spins around by switching from a side view to a front view. They go so fast it looks like they are spinning.
Hi, my name is Brooke Juddell and I did the chinchilla. Common name: Chinchilla. Scientific name: Chinchilla langria. Classification: Mammal. Behavior: In the wild, chinchillas live in social groups called herds, which contain around 100 individuals. Chinchillas are primarily nocturnal animals with active peaking at dusk and dawn. During the day, they rest in holes among crevices. Emerging at dusk to the foreage through the night, chinchillas make a variety of vocalizations, including chirps, squeaks, and barks. They use these sounds to express themselves from a calm, loving chirp given to a potential mate to a loud, aggressive bark when threatened. Chinchillas are very clean creatures. Predators of the chinchilla in the wild include birds of prey, skunks, felines, snakes, and canines. Chinchillas have a variety of defense tactics, including spraying urine and releasing fur if bitten. Why endangered: Chinchillas are endangered due to exploitation of the animal for fur. Protected wildlife populations continue to decline. Its habitat is threatened by human land alterations in north-center Chile. Without funds, researchers and conservation wildlife populations will be extinct in the near future. Chinchillas are originally gray in color with a small squirrel-like body and large mouse ears and a bushy tail. The characteristics that they are best known for is their plush fur. For humans have one hair from a single follicle, a chinchilla has more than 50 hairs from a single follicle. An adult chinchilla weighs 500 and 800 grams. Interesting facts: Chinchilla, chinchillas can swim because they can float from all their fur. Chinchillas can go without water for three days and without food for two days.
Hi, my name is Brock. I did the salwa. The common name for the salwa is salwa. The salwa is a large wild dogs. The name rhymes with nauha. Its classification is mammal. Habitat: The salwa lives in the forests along mountain range between Vietnam and Loa Peoples' Democrat Republic. Most live south of the Songkol River in Vietnam. The total range that they live in is about 2,500 square miles. Behavior: The salwa has not been studied in the wild yet because they are so hard to find. Most of the information scientists have about them comes from observing a captured female salwa in the zoo. Salwa give birth at the end of the dry season between April and June. The salwa is more active in the mornings and afternoons. It can use a large scent gland on its head to mark its territory. It lives alone or in pairs in the wild. Usually, the pair is a mother and her offspring. The salwa can use its horns as weapons when it's in danger. It cleans itself with its long tongue. The only recorded noise of the salwa is a short bleat. Interesting facts: The salwa is known as the Asian unicorn because it's rarely seen and some people think it's imaginary. The salwa's horns are collected as trophies and other parts of its body is used for medicine.
Hi, my name is Abigail Marino and I did the elf owl. The elf owl has two common names. One is the dwarf owl and the other is the whitney's owl. The scientific name is the demographician whitney. The classification is a bird. Elf owls live in North America. They nest in cactuses. Also, they nest in tree holes made by the woodpecker. They're mostly in reptilian habitats where there's water. They live mainly in the southwest of the United States and Mexico. Baby elf owls have fluffy gray feathers. They weigh less than one ounce. At birth, the elf owl is as small as a human fingernail. Young elf owls have grayish-brown feathers. Adult elf owls are five inches tall with a wingspan of 15 inches. They weigh one to two ounces. Elf owls don't have ear tufts. They have white feathers around their eyes that make it look like eyebrows. Interesting facts: Elf owls nest in holes made by the woodpecker, and elf owls are the smallest owl in the world.
We also owe Miss Watson, who went first. I thought we were waiting until the end to clap. We didn't give her a round of applause. Great job. So, hold on, we're gonna come to you and shake your hands and look at what you got there, and we'll take like a two or three minute break. So, stay where... What we should've done was had you come up here and we should've sat down. Next time you come, we're gonna do that, okay? But we're gonna come to you now and look at your books and go from there, okay? Stay right there.
Where's the Tasmanian devil? Great job, buddy. This is my favorite one. The Tasmanian devil. Great job.
He does?
Griffin has a chinchilla? You have a chinchilla?
You have a chinchilla? Yeah, actually I've had a chinchilla. When you were up there, I thought that was a koala.
Yeah, yeah. You have to give it a search.
About Tasmanian devil?
You guys are doing this. Yeah!
Where is it? Oh, this is just a picture of a student? I'm like, is this one of those ones? Why is it a koala?
I have some ice cream.
I was like, okay.
I would.
No, the cartoon?
Yeah, I would. I would just sit and stare. Yeah. I'd put him in a bed.
I was gonna say.
I would. 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 I would.
I would. No, the cartoon? Yeah, I would. I would just sit and stare. I'd put him in a bed. I would. I would. I would. Play your metal thing. I'd just have this metal boy watching. How are you doing?
Next time, the class coming, we are going out there.
Yeah, I think the bigger the group, the better it is because it's not leaving anybody out. No, no, no. Right, volunteers, but you know what? If they volunteer, I think it's great that they have the opportunity.
Who was a volunteer?
I said if they were volunteers, it's good to have a big group. If they wanna volunteer, have them all. We'll just do the walk-around, check it out.
Was it Sunday Globe that had the article with the kids in their shorts? Was it this morning's Globe? I think it was this Sunday.
Nobody's wearing shorts, I don't know.
The boys, the boys won't wear pants.
Don't come to my neighborhood because my three boys are running around with shorts.
Really?
Last year, when it was so bloody cold, I pulled below four five and said, "You can not come to school this way." Okay, you have sweatpants on, whatever.
I haven't seen it at all. In the middle.
My kids are hiding, my five-year-olds hide them under their jogging pants. Then they go to Little People's and you pick them up and you're like...
You're in big...
I know.
Did you get them dressed in the morning?
I do, but they still sneak out.
Thank you for coming and volunteering. Really nice.
Come back, you can come back next meeting. Alright. Always good to start it with a knock-knock joke or something, it's always good. Awesome, great job. Great job.
Thanks for coming.
Did you guys match your outfits tonight? You guys match, you look very nice. Very nice.
There you go.
How about somebody from every school? Representative from every school.
Then they'll go back and tell all the others, "When do we get a turn?" Deep trouble, then.
We'll bring it all the way over.
Oh, thank you, ma'am. What's the teacher's name? Mrs. Warren? Mrs. Warren. Mrs. Warren and Mrs. who? New mid. They were both here? Both classes were represented. So, both did this science curriculum. We'll talk about that later.
Mrs. Warren, thank you again, Mrs. Warren.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was lovely. Wonderful.
Okay, moving forward, we should start our meetings like that every time?
Agreed.
And I was telling Mrs. Warren over there, no matter how high our pile is, we should always start with this because our pile will always be high. Okay, so we're gonna go back into order, public forum. Seeing nobody, we'll move to report of the student representative.
Mrs. Watson, you have nothing? No questions? Okay.
We have a second one, so you can...
Alright, so it's kinda been, again, a slow couple of weeks, but a lot of little things here and there. I'm gonna start off with the student council. So, coming off a pep rally and everything and powder puff the month before that, we're kinda taking it slow as a student council. Between the council and National Honor Society, we're running our Super Bowl event right now. And basically, we're collecting cans of soup at all lunches and we're kinda making it into a little bit of a competition between the classes and the staff. into a little bit of a competition between the classes and the staff. So, each class is gonna have their designated spot in the lunchroom. They can kind of castle up their cans and anybody who brings in a can gets entered into a $10 Dunkin' Donuts gift card raffle and that's to each grade. And then, well, not for the staff, unfortunately, but... So, yeah, we're really looking forward to that. That goes on until the 11th, it started the 21st, so that was yesterday, into the 11th of February. And then, last night, we actually had what we like to call a student council bonding activity. So, instead of having our serious night meetings, we kind of ran one of our mock conferences. So, some of the officers, myself, Griffin, and a few others, ran kind of like little workshop-style things. And that was really fun. We bonded as a council, got closer, got to know somebody maybe we didn't know. And then, that also helps us towards being ranked on a state level as a student council, which actually is coming up in March. It's a little bit later, it's early to mid-March this year. It's our annual trip to Hyannis and it's a three-day conference at the resort center down there. And that's really fun. We're sending 12 representatives, I believe, this year. I think we're gonna do eight girls and four boys. That's really fun. We've done it in years past and it's great leadership training and stuff like that. And then, moving on, we have midterms next week. Looking forward to that. Luckily, they don't start on Monday, so that was nice. Thank you to whoever decided that. Gave us that day off the weekend. But Tuesday, we have our A period and our B period. Wednesday, C, D. Thursday, E, F. And Friday, only one exam, G period. And we can actually leave after our midterm exams if our parents write us a note saying we can be dismissed after the exams. So, that is all I have.
Some news in sports. Probably most important is our baseball team is actually getting funded a new backstop and that's the fence that goes behind the baseball diamond. But our old one was very far back and there were complaints about it being ineffective and such. The new one we have is magnificent. It's being put up, it's absolutely beautiful. It's painted black, it's at least seven feet taller than the old one. It has a curved arc on top of it, which the old one lacked. It's closer and more appropriate for the baseball diamond. And I know the baseball team is very, very excited about that. It's a huge thing. As far as actual winter sports, we actually got the names of all members of teams painted on the cafeteria walls, on the windows. So, that's a really good, like, team spirit thing because everyone at lunches can see everyone who's getting involved. Our school's indoor track team is going to their final meets. We have a few big competitions coming up as far as championships culminating in states and districts. Other teams are continuing. Our basketball team has had quite a few games lately. The season will start to wrap up soon, but still quite a bit of time left. And the football team has already started training either on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, which is good. We're hoping for a promising season in the fall. In National Honor Society, the Empty Bowl Dinner, which is actually gonna be on the last day of the Super Bowl fundraising event, that'll be held February 11th. Tickets will be sold for that by NHS students. If you have any questions, contact a member of the National Honor Society or Mrs. McLean at the high school. And that's a dinner in which you pay $7 for a ticket and you get two bowls. I mean, not two bowls, sorry, two tickets to fill a bowl with soup. But you can actually get a bowl that a student made in a pottery class. There's a raffle for that, too. There will also be a 50-50 raffle that night. And of course, the cans and money raised will be going to the food pantry. As far as the bands, the jazz band is also going to be performing at the Empty Bowl Night February 11th, so that's very exciting. The night after, they will be performing at the Glorious Stadium Theater, February 12th. That's always a great performance. There will be people from Mount St. Charles, their jazz band, the One Socket Jazz Band, and North Smithfield Jazz Band. We all go together and put a show. It's always very fun. Winter percussion will have their first shows the weekends before and after February vacation. The times will be announced, but the first one is the Dartmouth Show in Dartmouth, Massachusetts, the second being the home show at Blackstone Millville. Winter Guard will have that home show in conjunction with Winter Percussion. They also have had a few shows coming up. Woodwind and brass choirs perform at school events and they've been practicing very good. Second semester is starting soon and that means students who took semester classes will change to their other semester classes. Students taking a virtual high school class, some took them for a semester, others, such as myself, we were starting second semester. And one really exciting thing that's been continuing throughout the last month or two is we have a bulletin board hanging in the main lobby of our high school and students in senior class who get into a college actually have their name and the college they got into printed on it. And those are all being hung up as graduation caps in the main hallway. And that's really exciting because the border just gets more and more filled as you see more and more students get accepted to all these great schools. It's just a really nice way to show the accomplishments of our students and the futures that lay ahead for them.
Great. Awesome. Any questions? Comments from the committee?
Anybody needs any empty bowl tickets? I still have a few. Let me know.
We'll see you, Eric. Great job, guys, as usual. I don't have any questions. How many do you have? Is that what Brian usually asks?
No, no one asks, no one here to ask the questions.
Be ready next time. Have that number ready.
Well, they're juniors, they get a year...
Yeah, they got a year, yeah. I'm sure they're still counting down.
Thanks, guys. Moving forward, consent agenda A. Warrants, minutes of the meeting, January 8th, 2014. Those warrants, there's field trips on here, there's use of facilities. And the minutes. So, use of facilities, is the dance company?
Yes. Through the chair, just wanted to let the committee know that this is a, would typically have a fee associated with it, but it is a fundraiser for one of our neediest students. And so, I would recommend that we waive the fee. All proceeds go to the...
The person.
To the family.
Okay, questions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda A.
Motion, Mr. Tringali.
Second.
Second, Ms. Greenstein. Any further discussion? All the affairs, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. And we will move to school committee. The budget survey results have been posted in this packet, so it'll be online if people want to see the questions and the results and the comments in totality. Like I said last time, a third was, I would say, negative. A third was positive and the middle was kind of the middle ground, neutral. I will highlight some of the things that we're working on from that feedback in terms of more layman's terms, in terms of, you know, information out earlier. So, next month during our public forum, we're gonna have packets ready. And then, we're also gonna put those, make those available at the library and the senior center. And anywhere else that is doable. But I sent the copy to the committee. Look at it, we can look at it, talk about it in our next meeting as well. So, that is the budget survey. So, it's closed now. It was good feedback overall. The Foundation Formula Open Meeting is this Saturday for the central Mass area. It's at Neshoba Regional High School in Bolton. I think it starts at 11:00. I'll definitely be attending. I've been getting the notes. I think I gave everyone the notes from the previous ones. Good information, probably gonna be a lot of similarities in terms of the feedback that they get. So, hopefully, there's some, some little bit of change that comes along with that for FY17. And then, the MASC trainings are listed. I think I sent, I know Jane and Georgette are gonna go to Charting the Course in March at King Philip they're offering it at. And the other one I wanted to point out was the MASC Day on the Hill in April. It's April 29th at 8:30 in the morning. This was, I went to this event last year, it was really a good event to watch the legislative process. Did I say good event? Or the legislative process in terms of how they problem solve? What I am gonna kind of put out there to you, Mr. Himmelberger, is there might be some high school students that want to go. So, maybe you could look into that and we would clearly get them there, or, you know, maybe they have their license or whatnot. So, I know last year, there were some school committees there that had students with them and it was a good process. So, it'd be good if several of us went. So, it's April 29th at 8:30. And you do really get to sit down and advocate and spend some time with the local legislators. So, it'll be interesting this year with all the changeover. We're really not gonna have, and Alan will talk about this, we're really not gonna have any inkling from Governor Baker until probably March 4th in terms of what the money is gonna look like. So, that's after our public hearing. We're gonna, we're gonna do our best in terms of estimating what we think we're gonna get in terms of the enrollment of students. But those are the upcoming ones. And I am also gonna go and have someone come here to go over superintendent evaluation as well as, and I'm open for discussion about this, they'll do a, they can do it the same day, but also assessing how we function. A self-assessment.
They have one out, they have one that we can actually fill out and go through the whole process of filling out on, I think that would be important.
Yeah, I think it's a good, I think it's good.
We've done that in the past. A couple of years ago. Probably five years ago now.
What about the results?
There you go.
Okay.
Third positive, a third negative, a third...
So, I think those are the things that are on the horizon that we'll kind of, we'll continue to get facilitated, so. All right, so that's it for the, any other items, school committee?
Well, the regional agreement survey closed at the same time that the budget survey closed. I haven't had a chance to analyze the results, but I can say, just in terms of bar graphs, how happy are you with the current division of the elementary schools? 22% roughly said unhappy with the division, 14, very happy, 17, happy with the division. So, and then you have 37%, that was kind of right in the middle. And again, this will all be available as well.
Yeah, you just export it and we'll make it available.
Right, I did export it, I just haven't put it all together with the other surveys that are done. Do you feel that the elementary schools are functioning to support the learning of all children? 48% said yes, 51% said no. So... Do you believe that the classroom space in all the schools are being utilized? And 63% said no. If you had your child transition from elementary school to middle school, how easy was the transition for your child? And it was right in the middle? Okay, which coincides with the survey that we sent out to the teachers and the students. So, that was consistent. And if you sent your child outside the district, what were the main factors that influenced your decision? And stronger academics, specific programs, or NA was, were the highest of the, of the bar graphs. But again, there are many responses on there that we have to go through and bring it all together. But that's just a snippet of what the results were.
Great, I mean, it's, I think, I would rate these both a successful survey in terms of the efforts that we put out.
And good numbers.
Yeah. And, you know, good response back.
And there was a variety from both Blackstone and Millville. So, I think it's important to know that both Blackstone and Millville shared in the response.
Yeah, and I think, again, everything that's in this packet is made, is public on our website, on the district page, on the school committee, under the agenda and so forth. So, everything that we're looking at, you can go and look at as well and the surveys will be up there. So, we encourage you to look at them.
And just to reiterate, just because I read some of the responses on the budget and also the regional agreement, that it's important to know that paper copies are available. And I'm just not sure if there's a way we can do it on the Blackstone, you know, the Blackstone channel, that we can say the following things are available, you know?
Yeah.
Because I think oftentimes, it's said, but unless you're watching, I don't think they know. So, I think if we had a place where it's always up and you're scanning the TV and you say, "Oh, it's available," they might, you know, we might get more people to go down and actually go through the budget and actually be aware of the things that we're talking about.
Yeah. And again, our, you know, we have a 50% responsibility in the relationship and the public has the other 50%. So, I think making them available and the feedback around having card copies available, it'll absolutely be available from February up until the town meeting. And then, when changes are made, we'll put that out as well. So, it's important. Okay, moving forward, anything else? Okay, report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chaplin. I just wanted to jump down first to a couple of the other items before we get into discussing budget. And it gives me great pleasure to announce that we extended our high school principal's contract, Mr. Michael Dudek, who has, is completing his third year already under the third different superintendent. And he is really an interesting educator because he is so thoughtful in his analysis and he's doing a wonderful job. And it gives me great pleasure to say that we have Mr. Dudek under contract for three more years, starting July 1st.
That's great.
Great news.
There are many openings for high school principals throughout the state and they're not always easy to fill, so we want to make sure we let him know that we care, that he stays with us. And so, we're happy to announce that. A quick update on the roof project, certainly, the complex is now in final audit, the roofs that we completed last year at AFM and JFK. And as soon as we get that approved, we will post the final numbers for the committee as well as on our website. The high school is really completing a punch list of a few more items, primarily around custom-made fittings and finishes for some door frames and ladders. So, we're waiting on those to be finally installed and then that project closes out. They are complete otherwise. The, unfortunately, because they all couldn't go perfect, Millville Elementary ran into some issues that, due to improper installation of some of the masonry. And the principals involved on the team have agreed that they, through a series of events, poor communication, lack of oversight, need to fix it. And so, that is taking place now. We have to reorder some more brick. A different group of eyes will be on what the work, the work that was already done. And they're going to have to redo it at no cost to the project. So, that is on the project manager, the architect, the general contractor, and the subcontractor for the masonry. All will be making the proper adjustments and fixes so that project finishes 100%. Unfortunately, it's gonna take another, a bunch of warm weather for them to remix the mason, the mortar, and put the building back together the way it should have been done the first time. But the good news is no additional cost. MSBA, which is the school building authority, which has contributed 57% of that project, understands the delay and continues to fund their share. So, that's a good thing. The oversight does pay off, but it was a bit frustrating as, as we recognized what was slipping, but the professionals did come back and will make it...
And do you have a question?
Correct.
What part of the building was that just created?
This is, yeah, I'm learning more about mason construction than I ever wanted to know, but when the wall meets the slanted roofs, you have stepped-through-wall flashing, which will help to make the building actually drain properly. And there are weep holes, there are CMUs behind there, there is drip edges, there's dams behind that all work together in sequence to keep the building dry. And it's complicated for a layman, but for the professionals, it's pretty straightforward work. Or so it was explained to me. So, that's the pieces, there's all about four different locations where they're gonna have to go back in and probably pull out the work that was done. Hence, they have to order more brick, which will be the perfect timing by the time the brick gets here, the weather's warm enough, they finish the job the right way.
I just, I heard you on the selectmen's meeting the other night and...
How'd you do?
You had said that you failed the water test, so I wondered what spot it was.
Right.
So, it was more, it was summer.
It was the mortar, yeah.
Is the potential for damage with winter storms?
No, the building is now weather-tight.
It is.
And buttoned up so that we survive the winter if it ever happens. I guess there's a little bit of snow coming. Sorry, sorry.
On a Saturday.
Yeah. So, it was frustrating, but it's the, it's the, it's a fairly routine piece of work around the through-wall flashing that protects where the brick intersects with the roof line of the shingles. And that's what needs... And that's what needs to be redone to everyone's satisfaction before the project closes out. We do, we are holding plenty of money and are not paying anything further out until we get to commissioning by an independent third party that MSBA requires of all projects. So that's the update and probably not until April will we have the final disposition on that. For the, for the, this evening's portion of discussion of the FY16 budget, it gives me great pleasure to introduce to the committee and to folks at home, our new technology guru. And I don't believe that begins to describe all of his talents, Mr. Osiris Gonzalez. He comes to us from Newport, Rhode Island, which interestingly enough is another one of the PARK states, the Partnership for the Assessment of Readiness for College and Career testing that is being done in several states. And so because of the fact that he has already engaged with his prior district to get that district ready for all of the technical requirements around the PARK test, which is a computer-based test, we feel very fortunate that we have him on our team now. And Dr. Thompson does tease me a bit about being old and less technologically savvy than he is. I let him believe that because it's good strategy, most of it's true. And Osiris, Mr. Gonzalez is certainly a welcome addition to our team and you'll get to hear his assessment. Again, it's only been a few weeks that Mr. Gonzalez has been with us, so it's a credit that he has picked up everything he has so far. So welcome to Osiris Gonzalez and I look forward to, as everyone knows, Dr. Thompson has been working extensively assessing our curriculum needs and getting us all realigned with all of the state initiatives that we were a bit behind on. So it's been a busy year for that, it's included as part of our district improvement plan and the intersection of curriculum and technology and professional development is very, very challenging because they all go hand in hand, but they require very specific timing and very specific allocation of resources to make it all fit together to drive the best teaching, to give us the best learning, which will give us the best and most outstanding student achievement. So welcome to you both.
Thank you, good to be here. Been in this seat in a little while, but that's alright. Real quick, I just want to start off, just kind of take a step aside, just want to go back and revisit last Friday's professional development day. As I explained to you before, we had basically kind of two halves of the day. One was some extensive training on the educator evaluation system. I can report that that went excessively well. The trainer, David Castileen, was absolutely tremendous. I think that he managed to get everybody, teachers, administrators, all on the same page with a common understanding and we're looking to possibly bring him back early next year, finish our negotiations, get some feedback on what piece we need to spend more time on, but keep working through that. It is a very important part of our process moving forward, looking at student work, looking at professional development, looking at developing teachers and building that collaborative environment in our schools, and I think he put us on the right path. The other half of the day was spent in one of three areas, working on the curriculum mapping project, which has been going very well. We're in a really good place at this point. There's always a couple exceptions and a few difficulties depending on the last time when they looked at the curriculum, but most of the curriculums are sketched out at this point and we're looking to start moving them into the Edwin Teaching and Learning Platform. The other piece that did happen was we completed the DDMs and teachers are now in the process, if they have not already started, of piloting those, collecting data, and we will look at scoring them later on this spring.
Just one question, can you just explain to the viewers at home what DDMs are?
DDMs are district determined measures, this is part of the evaluation process where we are measuring student growth. If you're in math or English, you have to use the MCAS as one of those measures, then you have to develop your own measure. And you're looking for student growth and how much growth, you're looking for a normal piece of growth. So you're looking for a year's worth of growth, roundabouts. And we use multiple measures depending on the subject area. FIZED, for instance, will have two of those. If you teach English, you would have one you develop plus use MCAS to get an overall score for student growth. And if you have good growth and a good evaluation from your evaluator, you're on a, in your professional status, you're on a two-year growth plan, it's a little complex and when one really wants to spend a lot of time on it, they should probably give me a quick call. But that, but the student growth is part of the evaluation system and that affects the growth plan for educators and the goals for educators, so that's what that's about.
Thanks.
You're welcome. The other piece that happened, and this was obviously at the high school, is developing their MCAS, sorry, their NIAS reports, working committees, finishing those committee reports to get them compiled into the final NIAS documents for our NIAS visit next fall. So day went very, very well, very productive. Everybody was really involved with what they were doing, they had some time to work in groups individually on curriculum and they also had time to work on the evaluation process, so I think it went very, very well. So the budget, what you have in front of you is kind of a synopsis of additional requests in the budget. There is curriculum monies in the budget and wherever possible, we are rolling those monies forward to cover some things, but what I want to highlight is some areas of need that we need to look at adding some money into our budget. And I'll start with curriculum materials. Right now, the total on that is a hundred and three thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and that covers mainly textbooks and materials, this is beyond what is already in the budget. One of the key things we need to seriously look at is a K-5 math series. The math series that we have currently needs to be updated, it was one of the original Common Core curriculum that came out and actually the company that seems to have developed it no longer seems to exist, so that's kind of, kind of an issue. But there are right now better products out there. My hope is, or my plan is to start piloting math programs this spring and look to make a decision with teacher input as to what would be the best fit for Blackstone, Millville and have that ready for the fall.
So there will be piloting, what about three, three different programs?
Two programs, we're looking at Envision Math, which is, which is a Pearson product and Go Math, which is a Houghton-Mifflin product. I'm in the process of negotiating that process, I have a meeting tomorrow morning with the Go Math person, I met with the Pearson person earlier in the week to kind of get that off and going. Right now, the elementary principals are looking for volunteers in both buildings, looking for roughly, and of course, we always say roughly, but two teachers at each grade level at AFM, JFK and at least one teacher in Millville. And then those three, and then there'll be a survey given, some focus groups where they can give us input into what their experience was piloting these programs so that we can make, you know, a good informed decision on what would be the best for us.
Yeah, they're still traditional tech, hard copy textbooks.
They are, they are hard copies, they, all of the products out now have got a online component to them, a technology component to them. That is something we need to look at and I think we had this discussion earlier when we were talking about technology. If we're looking at PARK and we're going to be assessing them on computers, they need to be using computers in the classroom, they need to be working in the same environment they're going to be assessed in. And that's extremely important and we're going to be looking for programs that do that.
So help me understand the hundred and three thousand here, so right now, I'm looking at, last year we budgeted, and tell me if I'm going off base here, we budgeted about two-hundred-and-seventy grand for professional development, other textbooks, other instructional material, educational equipment. That total there was two-seventy. Is this one oh three beyond that two-seventy or is there going to be some mixture in there around, just helping us understand as well as the public?
Yep. This one oh three is over and above. Now, that's not to say that there's still some offsets that we will probably find as we go through line by line, but it is really an investment that we're going to have to look at. The net, net of it all, we will have in a couple of weeks, but you know, there will be some offsets. School budget, as everyone knows, interlocks in so many areas and there's a lot of lines in it. And there's offsets from other sources of revenue as well, such as some of the revolving accounts, some of the grants. So that when we look at this, this is what these will cost. And the net of it all will probably be somewhere close to it, but it's hard to say how close until we look at all of the offsets. For instance, when there is dollars in, for high school professional development, if we get the Math and Science Initiative grant to expand our AP offerings, some of that money would be used for that, so it's not going to be a total additional add-on. We would already have some of that money available to us, so it wouldn't be an additional request, we would simply reallocate a portion of that for that endeavor. And we're still waiting now for first to get grant approval hopefully soon and then that's pending the outcome of the state budget process, which got a curveball this past week with another three-quarters of a billion out of whack on current FY15. So the Baker administration has a lot of work to do to simultaneously figure out how to balance the current year we're in as well as come up with a viable FY16 budget. And because he is a new governor, he has until March 4th to produce that. So that actually works a little bit to our advantage as the new guys, so that we have a couple extra weeks to really get into that, so that we come up with the accurate number as the true need over and above what we have been spending.
Can I just ask, go ahead, Erin. I'm talking too much, go ahead.
I have two things. First, I just want to, you just mentioned the online availability. I would like to make sure whatever we do purchase, that we have access to both. I think in these days and times that that should be an option to us and part of the contract that we do purchase, if you can make sure that that's...
I can actually speak to the Envision because we are, we just bought Envision in Franklin, so this is our first year running it. My kids take all their math tests online, parents have access to it, parents have access to the lessons, the videos.
And you have an actual book in the class?
We have a textbook in the classroom and the only thing the teacher has to run off are the homeworks, which are differentiated, enrichment, remedial and also the regular practice. And it actually has been working very good, there was a few glitches, but I'd have to say for the most part, the use of technology, and we have Chromebooks as well, I saw that in the budget, but that's where they're taking the test online. And what they're actually doing is doing their work on paper, they're handing it in in case there's any glitches and we can still see the work and they're answering the problems online. And the only thing that takes a lot of practice right now is actually when you go from paper to online, there's a lot less writing and a lot more multiple choice, so there's a little bit of a transition there. So we still have, you know, five questions, it's called a task, that they do, but the online program, and I can only speak for Envision's because we just started it, has a very big online component to it. And like I said, usually when you differentiate, you know, there are parents who want the differentiating, they can go right on and they can see what we're doing and they can go to the next lesson, they can do it with their children, their children can watch a three-minute video if they struggle, so I mean...
You give it a thumbs up?
I give it a, I'm getting there. It takes practice, but it's actually, it's much better right now than the everyday math, it flows smoothly. And I can only speak for Envision that I think we're headed that way no matter what program you're looking at at this point.
And both, both of these programs have parent components, both of them do.
Yeah, and actually, I mean, the idea of, you know, online textbooks or digital textbooks is really, the publishers have caught on to that where they'll give you both but charge you the same price, so it is not particularly a savings to talk about online textbooks. They don't really offer that anymore, but...
And just to add to Mrs. Reggio's point, the large majority of districts that are moving to a new math program are choosing Envision. One reason may be that it is a Pearson product and Pearson is also behind...
The PARK.
The PARK testing. So the thought being that they, if those don't align, nothing's going to align and I think there is a lot of strong linkage already. We are still waiting until this fall before the Board of Ed officially approves if PARK will replace MCAS. But all of the, I think, all of the tea leaves point that they, that they will, but that remains to be seen.
And, you know, and just so you know, I mean, I didn't just pull these two products out of midair, you know, in my assistant superintendent curriculum group, these were the two highest rated, raved about products in a lot of districts that are having, seeing success. And again, you know, having the program is one thing, implementing the program is the more important thing. But these are the programs that people felt strongly about and felt that they were putting kids in a good position to be ready for the, for our new standards.
And even moving into middle school as well, there's a good, there's a good transition there.
That's what I was going to ask, how does this dovetail into what we're doing in middle school and then high school?
Well, we're going to have to start someplace, we're going to start at the bottom and work our way up. I mean, you know, you have to have kids coming into middle school with good basic numeracy coming in so that you can build on it. There is a sixth grade piece of that, I don't know whether we will eventually, you know, my plan is to jump in with both feet over our head. Right now, that's kind of what I figure we need to do, we will see a dip, being honest with you, but we got to start moving up at some point. So take a step back to make four steps forward, that's probably the best way to go.
In terms of the, David, the PD for next year, you're going to take a hold of that and you're going to plan it out and map it out in terms of, through these filters?
And actually, actually, one of the things that we're, you know, I say, meeting with and negotiating with, one of the things that they do is that they actually do some PD with the people who are piloting it, which is, which is good, because you have people that understand the programs and how they're supposed to be done, so they're implementing them or piloting, excuse me, not implementing, but piloting them with some fidelity, so they really get a good idea as to what's going on. And then part of the negotiations, when you decide on the program is, okay, what PD are you offering? And usually it's at low cost or no cost depending. So, but Envision's and Go Math are the two that have the biggest foothold right now in Massachusetts.
I have one other question, sorry. And it's actually more about the, what we have in front of us. I know that we asked for different, so that I'm glad to see different, but I do, you mentioned the line by lines, are we eventually going to see those?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just as soon as I can get them all completed.
So seeing this, and I know that the question was already asked by Bill about, tell me where the hundred and three, so is this the only increase we're going to see on those line items? Or is it going, this is, this is...
This is for, I'm sorry.
Or will the line items from this current year, are they, the rest of them staying where they were?
The goal, because of what we're doing is rather overreaching and complicated, what my, my plan would be is to crosswalk the information so that the committee can readily see what was in FY15 current and what is going to be in that line for FY16. Because that's the only way to have an idea and with so many lines in that budget that you can't possibly keep it straight, so.
The only thing I was looking at was what we have, what we gave, and I just kind of quickly did, you know, you know, but I think there is going to be that crosswalk where there's going to be additional dollars, is it going to be this total?
Right.
Maybe not.
Usually when we're sitting here, we have every line, so I'm okay with it being different, I just wanted to see where this fell into.
Yeah, and just to lay out the next month or so, we have special ed and student services coming in as a workshop next week. That is a tremendously volatile line in the budget and about as complicated as it gets to understand and analyze, project and be even within the ballpark. And then after that, we have our elementary principals coming and then our middle school, high school and extracurricular. So that by the end of those workshops, we will have the understanding of what's in all of those lines, where they are being reduced, where we are asking for additional funding, so that everybody has the clear understanding of one set of numbers and the rationale for why they're there. And I think that that crosswalk going from one to the other is critical. And I think that that crosswalk going from one to the other is critical so that we can see that this was what made up a particular line this year and the reasons for it being less substituted for or increased for the upcoming year. And again, I know that some folks say, well, a school budget should never increase more than 2.5% because that's all the town's revenue gets to increase. Some people want it to stay the same. But I have asked everybody on the leadership team and the staffs to come up with a true need. And then we will have to ultimately match the needs with the reality of the revenues. And as I mentioned the other night, we will make it work, whatever the number is. Whatever the number the committee brings forth and the towns vote, we will make it work. But I think it's important to know what each level gives us. And we do know, however we compare ourselves, we have a little bit of work to go to get to that district that we all want. And it's, we don't have to do it all at once in one big jump. But we have to have a plan. We have to have a three-year plan as to where we see the revenues coming and then how we can spend against those. So this is only the first, the first piece of the homework to get all of the pieces in front of us to say, okay, here's what we are looking at for personnel. Here's what we need for curriculum. This is what our technology budget needs to look like. And then once, and then special ed as those costs fluctuate. Once we have all of the pieces, then we can plug them in rather quickly and crosswalk them so that the committee has a thorough understanding of what's in front.
So is the hope, is the hope that after the presentations are done, after everybody meets with us, is that when we're going to get those line items on paper to see last year's and the projected for this year?
Yeah, I would hope that...
Because I'm seeing that getting closer to closer to the end of February.
Right, right. You don't get them December, February 25th for a public hearing on the 26th.
Which is, and if you look at our series of people coming in, we're getting pretty close.
Right.
And, you know, my concern is, I appreciate you looking for, getting into this math program and piloting. What I was hoping to see is that, you know, I know we put a lot of money into the reading program. And I know that, you know, now we're shifting, which is, which I think is great. But I'd like to be able to see, okay, the money that we had last year in the reading program is now shifted to the math program. And I'm just, I have a tough time seeing that just by what we have here. So I just want to, in my own mind, just get an idea of when we're going to get that projected budget so that we can actually analyze it and see, you know, just the movement of, you know, what we've seen in the past.
Right. We're working on it as we go so that we don't have to wait until the week of February vacation to get it all put together. Most of it will be in final format between the February 5th and February 12th. So two weeks.
And just to come back to, the literature program is still there.
Right.
So that's not disappearing. These monies here are additional to what's in there.
Correct.
There might be some decrease because we don't need as much of something. But, you know, these numbers might change, but the needs don't.
This is based on your analysis, looking at our district, looking at our programs and saying, we have a shortfall. We need to fill it with these programs, classes, curriculums, whatever.
And just to come back to that, I mean, what, one of the things I did in the fall was I did materials and textbooks summer.
Which I think is great. All this stuff on here is great.
And then from there, prioritized. You know, there's more on that list that we need to, need to address.
These textbooks, are any of them new courses that haven't been offered before?
Yes.
Good.
Can I, do you want me to, do you have more questions? Or can I, can I kind of go all through the curriculum materials? And then, and then I'll answer the questions you asked, the question I haven't gotten to yet. All right, so the next one, the next one down the literature closet. These are actually books for the reading program. This is, you know, we have bought books, don't get me wrong. But we still need more, and especially at the K1 level, okay? The program, the literacy program, the Teachers for Teachers program is absolutely fantastic. It is the right basis for instruction. It's instruction-based and you use a variety of materials to use. But we need to have the books for the kids to do the reading. And that's what those literary closet, and that's $25,000 on top of what we already have in there. And you can kind of see how we have it. If we do that, we will be in pretty good shape. The AP textbooks, and this goes back to the Mass Insight Grant. And again, you know, this is how much they cost. Some of the money from that grant might lower that number. But we're looking at, as part of our AP expansion, and these are new books and new courses. World History, AP Statistics, AP Chemistry, AP Computer Science. Okay, that's on top of the AP. That's, that is doubling our AP offerings.
Great.
Okay? That is, that is a very good thing. That's a very important thing to offer. Next step down, the Grade 9 textbook. Very old. Definitely needs to be replaced. So they've been rebounded. There's some that are falling apart. There's probably some that people have had as parents that their children are using. The problem is with this set of materials is that they have not been updated since the new English standards. Okay, so that's why that is down. It's 13, 130. That's just, that's just ninth grade. Algebra II text, same thing. It's an old book. It is not necessarily aligned with the new, you know, new Massachusetts, AKA Common Core Standards for Algebra II. Algebra II is your minimum requirement as to what we are now calling college and career-ready in math. Successful completion of Algebra II. So that's an important course. Okay, if you don't have Algebra II, you go off to college and you don't pass Algebra II, you're taking one of those, you know, makeup remedial math classes. Okay? Which is not what, not what we want our kids doing. We don't want them to spend the time on it or wasting the money on it. French II, again, that book is also rather old and needs to be replaced. Forensics is a proposed new course. It's a very popular course. It brings science in an investigatory inquiry sort of basis to it, which is the basis for the new science standards. The next one down, science probes. These are the probes that connect to the computers and do all the fancy things. Those are parts of the AP curriculum. Okay? And again, we do get money through the grant for materials and such. So that number might disappear if we get the grant. Okay? Okay, questions on, any other questions on curriculum?
The plan ultimately is there's going to be some rotating texts every year. So this isn't a one and done. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Right.
This is going to be something that we got to do ongoing every year to kind of look at different subjects and who's up this year. So it's really, this is small fry investment on curriculum, honestly. We did it last year with the literacy and we're going to continue to do it every single year. So just to make sure that that's clear to the public.
I think it's important that we update.
Right, absolutely.
And we're way behind in updating what we have. So once we get that big update, the rotation will start and it should be continuous. I remember Mr. Dudak coming in one of the years and he put up on the screen, you know, the copyrights of all of the books. And it was, it was really, unfortunately, it was sad.
And just, I know a lot of folks say, well, wait a minute. English is English and the language hasn't changed. That's true. However, what we teach, when we teach, and the sequence that we teach and the emphasis on different parts of that is what has changed. And there is far more emphasis on informational text, expository writing. And those are the things that have to get into the textbook for the proper grade level and the proper sequence. And yes, it's money. And Mr. Gonzalez is, can't wait to tell us how some of that intersects with technology. And, but, you know, it's an investment in what we will have for the next foreseeable generation, you know, the next 15, 20 years. So, you know, it's an important shift. We don't want to do it all at once, but it has to be gradually over a couple or three years.
And this is the last thing I'm going to say about it for tonight. It's similar to the science labs at the high school. They haven't been touched since it opened in 1970. We can't keep having that mentality, you know. So I'm glad that this list is here. I'm glad it's going to be here ongoing because we have to invest. This is, this is smart spending as far as I'm concerned.
Right, right. And none of those numbers are astronomical, really. I mean, you're not talking about $250 worth of textbooks. You know, the big, you know, the big one might be, you know, the math series. You know, but I'm pretty sure that depending on which publisher we go with, we can, we can divide that out over three years, which is what that's looking at.
But it's something that's going to bring our district forward and not keep us behind.
Right.
I think, I just, I appreciate the, the work that went into the, the things that you had to go through to find out, how old are these textbooks? You know, how old is our math, our math program at the elementary school? It's, it's not easy, but I definitely think to move us forward, we need to get into that mindset.
And a similar thing is, you know, we all know these people at this table, but the textbook is not the curriculum.
No.
I think some people can make that leap unfortunately. Oh, new, new math book must be new curriculum. Well, no, we're buying the, we're selecting this math resource because the curriculum has changed. So we're looking for materials that align with the curriculum.
Right.
The textbook itself is not the curriculum.
Right.
I think some people kind of lose that distinction sometimes.
Right. And actually, you know, the whole, the whole mapping process we're going through now fits in with the selection of materials and looking. And they go hand in hand. First question was, you know, what do we have for materials? Do they align to the common? So now they've been mapping, so now they've, you know, this isn't fitting, that isn't fitting. And it does make a difference.
And one last comment to wrap it up. You know, Dr. Thompson sits in an Assistant Superintendent Curriculum Roundtable. I sit in the Superintendent Roundtable. We have statewide meetings. We're not trying to reinvent our own wheel. You know, all of us that work in other districts in education understand, you know, what's at stake. And we're not doing anything that many, many other districts have not done or are in the process of doing to align curriculum, to increase rigor, to make sure that our students are ready for college or career when they graduate. And, you know, I know that there's a lot of folks who think that we can do that status quo. I'm here to say that after looking at school budgets for a long time, it does take additional funds. I think what's important is to make sure that everybody understands that what we say is what we have, is what we spend, is what everybody should be comfortable, that is transparent and accountable. And that's certainly what the school committee does. And I hope that we can have some forums with the community after we have our final discussions. Be happy to meet folks on a Saturday maybe or an evening and take questions on budgeting and on school finance. There's an awful lot of things in play right now at the federal level. If there is reauthorization of our Elementary and Secondary Education Act, it will probably happen now with a Republican Congress, which will be a little bit of a shift. But Congress has not reauthorized that act at the federal level for the last eight years. Those, that piece of legislation is supposed to be reauthorized and updated every five to seven years. It has not been by choice. And it has been left to the current administration to govern through waivers and grants. And that's not what the students across our country deserve and certainly we as educators need. So, and at the state level, there is another whole study going on that Mr. Chaplin mentioned with the Foundation Budget Review Commission because we know that the funding mechanism is broken. Nothing is the same as it was in 1991 and 1992 when our metrics were inputted into that foundation budget process, which ultimately spits out the Chapter 70 funding, which is the sole primary source for public education. And hopefully not FY16, but FY17. There may not be the additional $2.5 billion that's needed for that formula to represent what the cost of education is for our students in this time, 2015, 16. But there is hope that the additional monies will be rebalanced so that towns like ours, who have been on the short end of those financing over the years, will have a little more equality as compared to the rest of the state. So there's an awful lot going on. I get a little excited talking about it, as you can tell. And I would be more than happy to set up some, some community forums so that folks can come and talk and really, so that we hear what's on everyone's mind. But this budget will be explainable. It will be clear and it will be forthcoming so that everybody knows what's in there. Nothing hidden, no surprises. And that's the only way to operate in the proper fiduciary role that we have. Sorry.
Okay, so under the category of professional development, we're looking at right now about $46,950 additional dollars. That would go towards training in the Edwin Teaching and Learning Platform. Right now, we're just getting into the curriculum mapping piece. Once we actually build the curriculum in there, using an understanding by design model, there is assessments, lesson plans, all sorts of other things, you know, resources to use. It is very complex and in-depth. And that's to possibly bring someone in for a web-based training two or three times throughout the year. I don't believe with our PD days, we'll be able to get everybody in one fell swoop. But we do want to try to bring that piece to the next level. It's great to have materials, but if you don't have well-designed curriculum and really the forethought into how to teach it and teach it effectively, it pretty much doesn't get us very far. The Mass Insight, that's the AP grant. We have to have that in our budget. That's $10,000. We do get much, much more back from that, including training materials that will exceed the $10,000, but we have to be able to put that up first. Math instruction training, you were asking about the middle school. I'm looking at that money to look at training math teachers and also special ed teachers in mathematics, looking at how to be more effective in those areas. That's why that is in there. That would probably happen during the year, pulling teachers. So we have a cost of subs in there as well. Literacy, and again, that's our literacy program. Next year, we're adding in the writing piece. That does involve about a $10,000 increase from what we're doing now. That's what that is. Curriculum design, we are going to do, once we have it all mapped out, we need to go through unit by unit and design the actual curriculum units from the standards, not from materials, but looking at them, bringing a wide range of materials in to make sure our instruction is effective and making sure we have money to make sure that training. Looking at a train-the-trainer sort of model. So you have experts in each building and it's self-perpetuating. It's not something where you have, you know, the guru coming in from the outside and they disappear and no one knows what they're doing. But if we have trained people in the building that can go forward and train others, it will perpetuate and the ripples will keep going through the district. Early childhood accreditation, this is part of our Full Day Kindergarten Grant. We need to do this. That's the AYSC.
N-E-Y-C.
N-E, yeah, sorry. N-E, yeah, that one. So we need to have money for that. And then Teaching Strategies Goal is an assessment piece. It is lower because of our grant status than it, than it could possibly be. And we might actually get a little bit more money. But again, that's contingent on the state budget and how much money is put into those grants for next year. It might actually be free. But it is something that we need to do to be in compliance with the early childhood initiatives statewide. So that's the PD part.
Great.
Technology, I'll start and then I'll, I'll let you talk after that, all right? Under technology, and we did talk about the Chromebook Initiative, one-to-one initiative in grades nine to 10. Through further research, we also realized that the math department has a mobile cart of Chromebooks. And we already are going to go to a Google school. We're going to start this, as I mentioned last, last meeting, we are going to start turning it on this spring, get people trained and moving forward next fall. And the Chromebook is really a good vehicle to get into the Google environment. So what we're thinking is that we would, you know, ninth and 10th graders would have Chromebooks, go to a bring-your-own-device possibly for juniors and seniors with Chromebooks, a set for the math department, which already exists, but one for the English, one for the history, and one for the science department. So they can share and move those around and give kids access to that environment. That, as we mentioned before, involves the mobile management software, which is a per-device piece in there. And then the last thing under technology is Edwin Teaching and Learning. And that number is a guesstimate right now because right now it's free. The state has put money up for it as part of the Race to the Top Grant. This is the last year of the Race to the Top Grant. They're still deciding if they're going to partially fund that, not fund that. And the price of it depends on how many districts sign in between ourselves and districts in Ohio. So the middle of the road or the upper third is around... So the middle of the road or the upper third is around $7 a student, which is still considerably less than Atlas Rubicon and other things, plus it has pieces that Atlas Rubicon does not have. So estimating a cost of that at about $12,005. That's for the entire district. And that's technology. Good, all right. And we're moving on to you.
And thank you for, number one, bringing me on board. I appreciate it, and I know I have some tough shoes to fill with, with Mr. Tupin, having a long heritage here. My primary focus is on our network. Our network infrastructure is subpar. At the present time, we would not be ready to have our students partake with park testing. We have network devices that are at least seven years old. The newest appliance that we have is about four years old. If we were to try to upgrade those particular appliances to industry standards, it, it would take, we wouldn't be able to do that. Put it that way. We wouldn't be able to do that. What I've been doing in the last couple of weeks, actually, the last two weeks primarily have been scheduling walkthroughs and having walkthroughs with outside vendors, just to get a sense of what it would take to have our network infrastructure upgraded, primarily at the elementary schools. Right now, we do have in the, in the complex, here in the middle school, and also in the high school, we have a one-gig backbone infrastructure. Industry standards at this point, anytime any company comes in and puts in a network infrastructure, it would have to be at least 10 gigabytes. That would allow scalability, which is what we want to do going forward, as we continue to look at having more wireless devices in our school systems, as we continue to look at how to upgrade possibly our phone systems, voice-over IP, if that's something that the committee and also the assistant superintendent and the superintendent decide to go in the future. Also, if we want to look at some other features as far as the type of networking, video conferencing that we can have from our desks. I mean, there's so much that we can do with the scalability, but we can't do that right now. So I don't have any hard numbers as far as what that would entail, because again, we're just in the initial phase, but I do look forward to working with the assistant superintendent and the superintendent on getting probably the best possible road for us to take. And when called upon to bring those numbers, I'll be able to do that.
I think it's important just to map it out for us, and, and the same with the curriculum. These aren't like wishy-washy, these are musts. These aren't, you know, it's, I'm going to use the same word, it's sad that, you know, one gigabyte of networking. Does the E-rate help us at all in terms of the federal increase in terms of that at this point?
Yes, it does. One thing, E-rate has changed this year going forward. One of the things that we also have to take into consideration with E-rate, we only get 40% reimbursement because of our demographics. On top of that, our phone reimbursement will be going away over the course, starting 2015, 16, at a clip of 20% reduction, excuse me, 20% reduction each year. So the time is now to take advantage of the reimbursements that we're getting for our phone system, and then try to augment that type of reimbursement on top of what we're getting with E-rate, to put that money into the infrastructure. To make a decision, do we want to go into voice-over IP before those reimbursements go away, because at least we're getting some type of money back as we're spending the monies for our voice-over IP. Those are decisions that have to be made, and I am not qualified to say this is the direction we need to go without consulting with my superiors.
Yep.
I don't want to be the maverick, so.
No, I hear you. So, I mean, that's exciting, because we, it's absolutely what we need. It's similar to the curriculum, you know, of dusting off, you know, what was it, what was the copyright in the books, you know, eight years, eighty, nineteen, eighty-nine copyright? It's the same here, and, and we have to do it. If we're going to be park-ready, when? Maybe never?
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen.
So, so I'm looking forward to that. I'm looking forward to that plan, and I know you're going to have support, I mean, everyone else talked, but you're going to have support here to map that out and kind of move forward.
Thank you.
Can you just, you're a fresh set of eyes, I'm not going to hold you to any of this, but what, what was the one thing that you said, oh my gosh, they're only there?
Millville Elementary School, Cat Five.
Okay.
Everything, there was only two closets, two network closets in Millville. It is a smaller school, but the connect, the connection in the school is only at 100 megs. So if you were, for example, to have every student online at the same time, and having the admin staff trying to do their work in X2, or email, or web browsing, if you're having the computer labs trying to do some type of YouTube video streaming, that, that school in itself would be at a crawl, and you wouldn't be able to function. Now, we haven't had those types of situations, and it's very unlikely that everyone is online producing and trying to receive that content. But when I saw Millville, I was like, got some work to do.
The other side of the coin, what would you say is our strength?
This middle school.
Right?
Newest building.
Yeah, we knew. Yeah, it's.
Even with one gig.
But it, but it newest building, 10 years old.
Right.
There's still stuff here that we, you know.
Yeah.
Right.
I just have a question on your addition, because I'm reading Chromebook seventy thousand, but I'm reading technology forty-six thousand.
Some of the money that's in the technology budget will be rolled into that.
And to pay for the.
Yeah.
If we are, if we are, I mean, obviously, you can't jump in and have Chromebooks from K through 12, but.
Well, you can, you just have to have the money to do it.
An override on top of an override on top of an override.
Right.
But if we're looking at curriculums that are, that are online-based.
Well, I, I would say online-supported. I don't know if I would say online-based, but.
Because I don't, I don't use it online. The only thing I do is take the test, and it's a paper copy or a computer copy, but we're just moving into the.
But you do have Chromebooks in your classroom.
You have Chromebooks.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you, if you look at many elementary schools now, there's.
Right.
Chromebooks.
But we just got it, we just got them this year. I mean, we, we just, just started, and the infrastructure had to change based on just using the amount that we're using.
But what's the cart and what's the horse? We have to change the infrastructure before we.
It goes, I mean, it's Cat, you said Cat twenty-five. That's like. That's like a mouse on a wheel.
Right. And you can't, and, you know, and we've talked in detail about, about the backbone and the infrastructure of the high school, and making sure that's ready for, for that. So, you know, I think once you, before you put the devices in, you need to have the backbone there, and you can't do the backbone everywhere at once. But, you know, the other thing, and I know I'm preaching to the choir, but, I mean, if you look just around here, every single person has got a, a device connected to the Wi-Fi in, in this building. And anyone who goes to a meeting right now expects there to be Wi-Fi there. If you go to McDonald's, you expect Wi-Fi to be there. Okay? You know, we need to have that, the norm. That's how our kids are going to be working and operating in the future, is with portable devices in their possession. That is where the work is going to happen. That is where the assessments are going to happen. Back to the point with, you know, these, these math programs we're looking at, once teachers get their hands on the online assessment piece, they don't let go of it because it's quick, it's easy, they get results fairly quickly, they get diagnostics right away, they know where to go and what to do with their kids to make sure they're making progress. It's the same with the work that they're producing.
Yep.
With the devices. It increases and augments the learning.
It's definitely teacher-friendly too, and parent-friendly.
Yep.
When I give a test online and a, and a parent will click on, you know, Johnny got a ninety, these are his focus areas, and it lists it out. These are his, these are what he, was his strengths. And it's amazing, because the amount of work that it takes to do that is, is a teacher just going through and saying, okay, question one was a number sense, okay? It's just hours.
I'm sure it helps on standard three too, with parent engagement.
And the, and the good. Do you see if parents look, if parents were looking at it?
But I did that, I mean, the only thing that's going through my mind, well, there's many things going through my mind right now, but, you know, I think of the years and years and years, and, and none of us were here, but they kept patching the stinking roof, okay? And the equivalent of that is all getting some electrical tape and going to Millville and wrapping those, wrapping those.
Yeah.
Cat twenty-five wires that are all over the place. You know, we can't, we have, we have to stop doing that. We have to stop patching things and get some new things in there. Books, Millville, everywhere, and we've got to plan it out, you know? And, and, you know, we're, we're real behind. We're real behind.
And I just, I, I mean, I, and, and the reason I was going there is, is I was going to say, I, I think we need even more than three carts. I mean, I think we need Chromebook carts that are available to teachers in a classroom who may need to, to access that. And, and, you know, putting, you know, if you start with nine, ten, and then you go seven, eight, and you go five, six, and, but your program, curriculum, you're trying to start with K five. I mean, I think, I think if we're going to push the boundaries, we need to, to push them even a little bit.
And maybe there's some revenue streams out there that we have to explore.
Yeah.
And, and go with.
Yeah.
But you're right, we have to kind of, it has to be the norm.
Yeah.
You know, you know, I'm, I even go with, we need to look at how we use our library time everywhere. You know, it's not just going and checking a book out anymore, it's going and getting on a Chromebook and looking at things and exploring things that way.
But not only that, technology too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we have to get the kids, not just this is a mouse. I don't think people know what a mouse is anymore. It's all finger moved, and I just think adjusting.
Yeah, and, and it is, and it is kind of funny, because the population is coming up to the elementary schools now. They, they did not grow up using mice. They have all used their fingers and touchscreens.
Right.
And you, you know, you, you give a kid a screen without, and they're very confused, and you look at any baby carriage, they're all using touchscreens. So that's going to be the future, as scary as that is.
I mean, I know we can't, you know, put, you know, those Chromebooks in the elementary, but can we look at something that's going to aid in there, that process when we get to the middle school, and they're that much further ahead than where they are now, I mean.
Well, my, my, my sick, demented dream, or my, my vision, is that, you know, from six through 12, you have one-to-one Chromebooks. Five below, you've got classroom sets that they use in the classroom. That, but again, you gotta, you gotta take, well, labs, labs are dead. You're not going to be going to labs anymore. You're going to have the technology on demand when you need it. But that's a multi-year process to get there.
Yeah.
And there's several steps to it. One is actually having the devices. The other piece is having the infrastructure to support the devices. Because it isn't any good to have everybody sitting around looking at a screen, waiting for, watching the wheels spin. That doesn't really help anybody else out.
And I was going to say, Dave just mentioned it, to our left is a, not to hit my left, but to his left is a dinosaur of a computer lab. We use it only because we have nothing else. But we do need to get away from, as you were saying, Chairman, the patchwork. Need to be more progressive. There is going to be some sacrifice. Also, as Dave said earlier, maybe we have to take a couple steps back to go forward, but we do need to make that investment in our infrastructure, in the curriculum, in the, the type of vision that we have going forward in order to make a progression. You know, I come from Newport, where when people, when you think of Newport, it's a ritzy town, the mansions, the yachting, the, you know, the boats. But it is a very poor, demographically challenged city. And the children, they don't have these devices that they have at home, for example. So we had to provide a lot of iPads, we had to provide Chromebooks, we had to provide, provide for them a lot of appliances for them to use. The great thing that I was able to do while I was there was make a case with the superintendent and with the school committee, infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. That's a school committee that was very progressive and said, we're not going to skimp. We're going to make hard decisions, but spend the money. And so now, that district that I just left have brand-new switches, APs, they have the Cadillac of the Cadillacs, which is Cisco. And so now you go into any building, and you're always connected. You have readily accessible, you have readily access to all of your data, whether it's on your iPhone, your Google Droid phone, or on a laptop. There are no, no skimping around. They made the decisions, and they're much better for it.
You're not going to have any problems selling that here. Okay, anything else?
Just one real quick, and that is that sometimes we lose sight of the fact that technology has, has moved so quickly. Instagram has their 10th birthday in April, from the first Instagram in 10 years. They've already been around for 10 years. You know, our seniors were in third grade when Facebook came on the scene. And tablets have only been around since 2010, and they're going to be obsolete with the bigger screens on, on some of the new devices. And, you know, our smartphones have only been here since 2007, and yet it seems like we've had them forever. So nobody is planning to use less technology. And our students, when they get to higher ed and they start walking on campus, completely, as, as Osiris says, completely wired, completely covered, and with, with the bandwidth to accept the volume. And we're not going to use less, we're only going to use more. And to not plan for it is doing a disservice to, to everybody. And no different than looking at the high school infrastructure. You know, none of us have the same windows in our homes that we had in 1970. And right now, I can tell you, my feet get a little chilly in the morning, sitting in my office, because the infrastructure at that high school is going to have to be looked at. I'm not saying we've got to build a new high school, but we certainly have to understand the depth and breadth of what's needed there. And it's no different with technology, you know? And I think between Dr. Thompson and certainly with Mr. Gonzalez, there's a synergy of what, you know, we're looking to do, and, and yes, we're going to have to stage it to make sure that we can get there, but it has to be continuously moving forward, so.
Great. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad you're here.
Glad you're here.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, our second public forum.
They're leaving us.
Seeing nobody, I'll move forward to the school committee forum.
First off, just like to thank all the people that participated in all of our surveys, technology survey and the regional agreement survey. Got some really good information that will really propel where we're going forward. Too bad all the seats were relatively empty. It was great to see Mrs. Warren and Mrs. Newman's kids here. Hope we can do a lot more of that. Just for the people at home, the next several meetings, we'll be featuring one facet of our school each week in their budget. So we saw curriculum in technology today. The 29th, we're going to see student services, February 5th, elementary, and February 12th, high school and middle school. So if you're particularly interested in one of those areas, please come to these meetings and participate. You can stop and ask questions and things like that. So don't sit at home with your questions, please come to the meetings. And then that's leading up to our public hearing February 26th. I think last year, a public hearing, I think we had three people attend. Yeah, you heard that right. We had three people attend our public hearing last year. But yet, when we got to the town meetings, a lot of people said, well, I didn't know, I wasn't informed. So please come to these preliminary meetings, but please come to our public hearing on February 26th, so.
I would also like to thank the fourth grade class. I know that can't be easy for a 10-year-old to come and speak in front of men with suits or not suits, but ties and ladies, and I think they did a wonderful job. I think they should be proud of the effort that they put forth. It was very professionally done. So congratulations to those teachers, but mostly to the children and their parents, who probably worked very hard to make sure they presented themselves well, so. And I'm really happy I can drive around the elementary school now. Even though the roof is not perfected, at least the project has moved to a state where we've eliminated some of the chaos.
When you do that, can you shut your Wi-Fi off with your phone cell? It's raining.
Connect to Wi-Fi at the elementary school.
Sitting in the parking lot, can't do it?
No, you can't, no. Uh-uh.
Did they shut it off?
What?
There's a public at Millville.
They needed the juice somewhere else, they needed, you know.
Not at all, huh?
I'm sorry, George.
No, no problem. I also just want to say thank you to the fourth graders, the parents and the teachers for coming tonight. It was very enjoyable. Thank you.
I just echo the same thing.
Yes, it was very nice to have the kids here, and I hope we see more of them. If you ever need any, I usually have four at home that say, can I come with you? And I just, I actually had a question about the updates we were, were given about the, where we stand to date with the budget. about the, um, where we stand to date with the budget. Um, our transportation contract is being renewed this year? Is that already in?
In matter of fact, it is.
Okay.
And our bus, uh, contract is up June 30th.
Okay.
And, um, bid specs have to be written and that bid has to be put forth.
Okay. I just want to make sure that is looked at very closely. I know we discussed that already and, um, I see the negative number here, so I'm just very concerned with that. And I know at the beginning of the school year, the buses are very full. Um, we already missed that boat, but I, I think, I think the number of the kids on the buses need to, needs to be looked at periodically through the year so we can make sure we're spending that money where in the right place.
I would agree.
Thank you. And that's my only question tonight.
Okay, uh, I echo everybody and it's the danger of going last. Um, so, uh, we got a lot of work to do over the next, uh, many weeks and, uh, we hope people are here to participate or at least observe, um, and, um, and go from there. So, um, we'll be here next week at a workshop. Uh, we will not be live, but, uh, it is open to the public, um, and, uh, we'll go from there. All right, we go for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Jane, seconded by Wendy. All those in favor, so I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned, good night.
Are we at 7 o'clock?